It's 5:32 and I will call this special meeting to order. I'm so self-conscious every time I touch my face when I'm looking at it. So what we have before us is an extraordinary document developed by Joanne with, I assume with some of Andy's help. I think it's beautifully organized by year. That was very helpful for me. It was also frightening at how much time that we have spent on this issue for the last seven years. With the limited resources that we have and the limited staff, it's extraordinary. And I know Kennedy thinks that people, they won't look at it. I still think they need to see it to understand what we've gone through. Do people want to ask questions or do we want to let Joanne just talk to us about it? What do we want to do? Oh, okay, somebody's welcome. How would we like to proceed? Do people want to have ask questions? Discuss, or do we want to let Joanne just talk for a little bit?
I think Joanne could take the lead. That will stimulate a lot of conversation, I bet.
Okay. Joanne, having put this all together, what do you think we should do next?
Well, I can kind of take you through it if you want. It might go on. And, you know, I think if you have any specific questions, that would be the way to go because I tried to list item by item, especially the items that...
Jo, you're a little far from the microphone and I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
Okay, I'll move to other places with Nancy.
Okay.
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, so I tried to go through item by item and list everything that happened kind of from the beginning, when we discovered it, how we discovered the mold, what our next steps were, and every time they gave us funding or taken funding away from us. And there were some construction documents in there that show, you know, when the contract started or there was a change order that caused the delay when we went before the City Commission, the EPC contract, when that was signed, when it was completed. I didn't include the contracts themselves. I thought 311 pages was lengthy enough for a document. But there was one item, I will say, that I think I forgot to include on the list, and that was in August or July, on July 24th of this year. Yeah, it's not on here. On July 24th of this year, we got the letter from HUD indicating that they were doing a remote public housing assessment and requested we send certain information into them, which we did on August 24th. It was due by August 24th and we sent it on August 24th, which was only nine days before we got that letter. So, and I know they had not been through all of that in nine days because it was thicker than this packet what we sent in. So I'm pretty sure that was not the FARS assessment they're discussing. What I will tell you also is that I have had a couple of conversations with one of the HUD staffers who indicated that he had a discussion with management at HUD and asked them, "Why are we doing this? We're already kind of doing this. And so why are we doing this again?" And from what I understand, the upper management is kind of backed down on this, doing a whole other FARS remote or onsite visit, whatever they plan to do that they mentioned in that letter. And the next step is probably still going to be as it was back in March to negotiate the recovery plan, which indicated that things that were in that recovery plan are probably, what are going to be negotiated in a new one. So that's all I know about it right now, but it sounds like they're kind of backing down just a little bit. But I don't have anything official that says that. That's just conversation between myself and one of the HUD staffers. I think probably to go forward with this meeting, the best thing is if anybody has specific questions of me. Sorry, I've got my back uncertain to some of you.
Did you ever get a response from the woman, I forget her name, in Kansas City, who was the head of the...
Frank Clary. No, I sent the letter to HUD. It was a couple of days after our last special board meeting, indicating that the board was meeting and would be providing a response to that letter.
Just like to say that I really appreciate you taking the time to put this massive document together. And I really think that the timeline is incredibly helpful and changes some of the perspective, at least my perspective, as it's related to this, because I think there's so much that is easy to forget when you don't have it in front of you. So I guess my question is, I know we're going to probably send all of this information, even if they don't read it, it's probably good for them to see it. But with your experience, are there particular things that you think we should highlight in our rebuttal to them?
Well, I think the things that we should highlight are, first of all, obviously the tone of the letter. And then obviously the delays to respond to the statement that we had no idea of the time or money involved in this project. I think this, the tape in this document is evidence quite to the contrary. And I think we need to highlight some of the delays that occurred, many of which were caused by HUD themselves. I think that letter was probably developed, I know it was developed, by staff who were not there during the time everything was going on at the apartment towers and in HUD offices that weren't involved in the apartment towers project at all. And I think we need to highlight that because, you know, we didn't create most of the delays. We didn't intentionally create any of the delays, you know? There were change orders, there were things that came up because you can't anticipate that at the beginning of a project on a building of this age and this size. And I thought we did really good. I think we only had like $99,000 in change orders except for the windows and the sewer lines. And on a project that started out with a $5.4 million grant, I think that's a relatively small amount of change orders. So I think we did a very good job with cost control. And we had engineers' estimates that came in at $2 million more than what HUD awarded us. And then we went back and took out some of the HVAC costs and some of the water-saving devices, toilets, showerheads, sink closets, refrigerators, took out those things out of that budget. And the engineer's estimate was still more. We thought we would be able to use all of our RHF files that were accumulated, but through no fault, well, not entirely the fault of ours, some of that money, some of it was taken back through no fault of ours. Some of it was taken back because there was a misunderstanding about whether or not the obligation and expenditure date had been extended. The field office also thought it had been. So and I'm not trying to throw blame to them, but my point is that we didn't create a lot of these delays. We had no way to know that towards the end of the project, not only we knew there was not money for windows and we had been chasing money down since since we were told the windows wouldn't be funded in the project. And Phil was involved in some of that, Jamie was involved in some of that. Another day I realized I didn't put in here is we even went and met with Mayco to see if there was any possibility of getting part of it as a donation. We didn't make much progress there, but we tried. And we had no way to know that the sewer lines were going to be deemed unusable when we thought we were to the end of the project except for windows. So, I mean, a lot of those things were just not things that we could have anticipated.
We could also argue that, I mean, while the windows were an added expense, they were deferred maintenance for decades. And to not replace them would have been, I think, negligence.
It would have been detrimental. In fact, we once, after the very first good rainstorm, and the contractor said, "Oh, hold the thumb, there's water coming in these old windows. And if we continue on and install flooring and shoving the sits on the floor and stove base and anything the water may have touched, especially without carpet on the floors, and water would have just run across those concrete floors like a river." You know, the sensible thing to do was to stop work at that point, say, "Hold it, don't do anything else. Till we figure out what we're going to do about these windows." We did have them purchase some, they call them pigs, but they're like water-absorbing tubes or something that they put up against them to, against the windows to absorb the water. But we were going to have the same problem in just a matter of time if we didn't replace those windows. We were going to have the water infiltration and the air infiltration and the humidity infiltration. And we were going to have no energy savings because it was all going to go out the window and literally.
I think the whole board fully realized and agreed that the complete project of how the window period, there was just no way.
And this is something the field office was aware of. I mean, we talked about it, talked about it, and talked about it, the field office. And our office did, and trying to think of different ideas. On the day that we called, that we had a conference call with headquarters, the topic of discussion was going to be a capital fund financing program, which is almost exactly like what we did with the city, except that it leverages, it collateralizes our future capital fund grant. And with the city, the agreement we have with the city, it does not collateralize anything. And so, you know, if we can't afford to make payment any year, the city will, it's still due to the city, but the city will defer the payment. They probably won't be very happy about it if they will.
I have a question. I have a question. So now we've had Joanne prepare two separate documents. The first one was a response line for line to the letter that we received that was so insulting. The second one is now this one, which explains seven years' worth of activity related to the towers. My question is, as Kennedy pointed out, they're going to spend 35 seconds reading our response. They don't care. We now have to, I think, write a two-page letter that is our angry response to the letter that we received with this 311-page document as an attachment to that response. And then we have to demand a meeting with whoever it would be, that would be the appropriate people to meet with. In particular, the person that wrote that two-page report that was so insulting, including that person, to discuss this with them in person on Zoom. What do we do? How do we write a two-page letter that sums up how insulted and inappropriate and angry we are that includes enough documentation from the first document Joanne wrote and this document?
I think... Go ahead, I'm sorry if I think you were dead.
I... I'm a little bit at a loss at how to do that. And I don't know if Kennedy or Jamie or somebody has an idea or Livy or whoever how to do that.
Well, first of all, let me say that I think the person to request the meeting with is Frank Clary and her staff who are in the field office that had any part, because outside of the field office, I don't know who saw that letter, who helped draft that letter. But I know the people, I know who the people are in the field office. Many of them, some of them I've never met in person. The letter reeks of a, coming from an auditor's perspective, I think it's important to let them know not only what we're unhappy about, but what we're not contesting. We're not contesting our troubled status. We're not trying to make that go away because we understand how we got to that point. And they need to understand, everybody needs to understand how we got to that point and which is the purpose of these documents. So I think they need to understand that we're not trying to contest the troubled standing. And we're not contesting the two items that we agree with in the letter. I think what we're contesting is the tone of the letter that sounded almost like a personal attack on the board and myself and my staff in some ways. And I...
I agree with that. So the first, the first two sentences of the letter say, "We are not contesting A and B." The rest of the letter says, "Something has to include some of the data that we have collected in these two documents" to make it...
I think then we say, "Well, I'm sorry to keep cutting you off."
That's okay.
What we say then, I think, is what we do disagree with is this, this, and this. We did realize that the time and financial commitment that was involved in this project. And here's what we did to try to rectify it. So many of the delays, and we can list some of them, such as loss of replacement housing factor funds. And our appeals to get them back, which we did, and we got some of them back, were part of the delay. There was a delay, a seven-month delay from the time we applied for the grant funds to the time they approved the grant funds. There was like another six or seven delay.
It sounds like you have a plan of how to rewrite, how to write a short response. And we're talking about two pages of a letter, right? No more than two pages, right, Kennedy? So that it keeps their attention, because more than a two-page letter is not going to keep their attention.
Right. The other thing, one more point I have to make in there is that we have no intention of transferring our Section 8 program to another entity. In fact, that would be counterproductive if we're going to pursue a REDD project or a voluntary conversion to Project FACE, which we're just about to spend a bunch of money on a physical needs assessment to help us make that decision. But that would just be counterproductive for us to do that, number one. And number two, who knows where they would transfer the program and take that assistance out of our community? So I think we need to be very firm that we would not agree with that. That problem has been rectified, by the way. The Section 8 debt to the Public Housing Authority, to the Public Housing Program has been paid off. We need to let them know that. So you guys can let loose of that little tangle. We understand?
Yes.
We understand we should have done it? Patch it, let's move forward. The FHI issue, we understand. We're rectifying it. It can't be an overnight solution. And we will begin to discuss what we want to do with that program. And just kind of each, each item, item by item, agree with it or disagree with it and why, and take it from there.
Would you agree with them or disagree with them? Whenever it requires me, so make sure you include in consultation with HUD. Like, some of those things were in consultation with HUD throughout the entire process. So make sure you're reminding them that this was done in consultation with HUD.
Yeah.
And make that statement clear repeatedly in consultation with HUD.
Yes. And the only constant that was there, Frank Clary is the only staff person that is there now dealing with our agency that was there through this dilemma. So the other staff, the engineer, the portfolio manager, and the financial analyst that we were working with during that time have either left HUD or left their positions and moved to other departments. So and Fran is very well aware. Her and I had conversations during this era, we'll call it the apartment towers era. And so she would, she would, she will have knowledge of the project. Adam Austin, who is, they call him an auditor in the HUD office, HUD office, the field office has never had a staff person called an auditor. We don't really know what his role is there, but the letter reeks of an auditor's response. So I think he probably had a hand in writing that letter.
I would hope an auditor would not be so vague. That's the problem. It's a quantitative...
Jamie, I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
I said I would hope an auditor would not be so vague. That's the problem, is that that letter is incredibly vague and does not include quantitative anything, really.
And I think that's one of our problems that we need to state in the letter. It's not quantitative. Explain to us why you think we didn't understand so that we can accurately respond to it. Maybe you could have saved us from putting together a 311-page document to refresh your memory. Most of these documents, they should have on file. They came from them. And if they come from them, they solve them.
That brings up my question about the packet. Is there anything that you're aware of in the packet that we're providing them that we have not given them before?
Well, without going document by document, I don't think so.
I mean, most of that should have at some point been in their hands, or there's nothing that we would have concerns about being new information that they maybe haven't reviewed that on there if they chose to have available.
I'm pretty sure they've seen it all, even down to the resolution authorizing me to negotiate the EPC contract. It may not have hit somebody in their office, because, you know, everybody at HUD has their assigned roles. But somebody at HUD has it. They have like share file systems where everybody can go in and look see these documents regardless of what department they're in. And, you know, when we entered into the EPC contract, the asset, the portfolio manager would have been able to go in and see if they had an EPC. I'm pretty sure they probably got an email that we were approved for. HUD approved that.
I wonder how much of a turnover they've had in seven years, if we're not dealing with the same people at federal level?
At the federal level, I have no idea.
The turnover, I think we're dealing with somebody with ideally history of what he's talking about.
Yeah, we're dealing with people from two administrations, if nothing else.
Yeah. Yes.
And that's, and that is, that's a problem because people in the previous administration were more supportive of public housing and stuff.
The summary point of the letter is, we're not contesting the troubled designation. We're not contesting the two things that we agree with. But we fail to understand where these other statements came from, how they were quantified, and what do you want from us? What do you want us to do now?
Would it be useful to format our letter?
I am concerned particularly, Joanne, on your behalf, about the part where they say you misused funds. And I think that has to be in the letter. Because you did not misuse funds. You used a process to pay bills that was not as, not clear, but it was not a misuse of funds.
I think misallocated is a better use of words, allocations between programs.
But it's a standard operating procedure. And it is not unique to you or this housing authority.
My understanding there allows me to admit that that isn't standard, but it's one that a lot of housing authorities do. And it was essential based on the budgeting and funding that we received and that HUD was aware of it and had not told us not to do it.
No, HUD told us not to do it more recently than after we got the troubled status and they started reviewing our financial report. But I mean, I think it showed on last year's audit
I mean, you've been doing this, you've been doing this for 15 years, 20 years, right?
Well, maybe not quite that long. Maybe the last couple of, well, I would say off and on for the last 15 years too.
Yeah.
As in previous years, we've been able, except for the last couple of years, we've been able to clear the balance before year end, and so it wasn't an issue. And the last couple of years, that has not been the case because the way we earn our administrative fees and us to run the program, the Section 8 program, I mean, we had to pay the overhead and the largest part of the overhead for that program is salary benefits.
Well, I, however you, I'm going to task you with writing this letter now. But I, one of the things I want to make sure that you put in this letter is this issue because the attacks on, the personal attacks on the board are are bad and are unfair and unreasonable. But the attack on you professionally, I think we need to make sure that we have your back on that and that. And I presume I'm signing this letter and maybe you also, but I want to make sure that they know that we knew what you were doing and... but I, I want to make sure that they know that we knew what you were doing, and it has never been an issue, and why is it an issue now, and why are they attacking you? However you want to write that, I, 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 if you, however you do this, I think it needs, it needs to be written in an outline so that your statements are short and sweet in response to different things, so that it, it's easier to think they might read it.
And by the way, I also learned that Fran Cleary is retiring May 1st of next year, so I mean, it's especially important we get this, I think, cleared up now while there is somebody in that office that was here during all of this.
Okay, now my question to the board is, is what I'm tasking her with the obvious, the logical next step, and do we, do we need anything else from her before she does that? Or do we, are there, do we have any other questions or issues that we want to raise, or is what we have now adequate for what we need to know?
I do think in our letter, and I'm not sure how this will fit in at what point, but you need to also address what we want, what we hope to gain in that letter, one is in the meeting, but do we want to see potentially a, a potential revision of their initial letter, or an amendment to the findings? I don't know what the normal protocol would be in that situation, but I think we specifically asked, and asked for a timeframe that sounds reasonable, and I don't know if it's reasonable for us to ask for a timeframe from HUD.
I, I certainly think if we provide them with all this information, which this, this 311-page thing gets attached to this short letter.
I would like to add to this, the two things, the day that Phil and Jamie and I met with Mayfield, and also the July 24th letter for the review, and the day that we submitted that information.
Sure, but I, I do think we are demanding a revision of, of, of the, the two-page thing that they, was their so-called review of our agency, because it is inaccurate.
I think her after we met, if we ever were going to meet with, then I think we would be persuasive enough so that we could say, now we think it's time to revise the initial letter.
And I think the purpose of our meeting is to state our concerns, and receive clarification on their position.
Yes.
I think we also need to draw their attention to the agendas that are available on the website, because they mentioned the minutes, but it doesn't sound like they looked at the agendas, and that's where a lot of this is addressed, most of this is addressed in our agendas. The, the board packet is why we don't specifically bring up all the financial stuff in every meeting, because you tell us, you explain it in those packets, so it was there for them to look at, it's on the website, so they need to take advantage of that.
I could go back and do, I could say, I could go back and do a little research, since they were concerned about the, the accounts, records versus in-house reports, but I don't know if they'll know what they, that those, the EPC reports. Okay.
I, I would like, I would like to suggest that Livy, you send her, send Joanne an email to remind her about that. Jamie, you send Joanne an email to remind her about the import parts, the points that you think are important. Kennedy, do you have anything to add? You're muted. If anybody has anything that they think is very important to be included that in that letter, email Joanne so that, because there's a lot of things for her to remember right now.
Linda Morse, I would, it seems to me that HUD had someone pull together all or any ammunition they could into that one letter, accusatory letter, to not only Joanne, but our board as well, and I hope that we have a hard-hitting letter that goes back to them. I don't, I, I don't even want to see a milquetoast response. I was offended by the letter and the criticism of the board. I do ask questions, I don't always get good answers, but sometimes I let them go, and because I am not on the inner group here, and so, I, but I don't believe we should have been criticized to the degree that we were, I think that was overdoing it, and I think we are entitled to a better explanation about what they're, but, well, I'll tell you the truth, what they're accusing us of, because this is pretty outrageous, I really think that they pulled it together, used all their ammo, because they are forcing us into RED. We have, according to that letter, we are incompetent, we can, we have no financial responsibilities, we don't take them seriously, and, and so gee, the only solution is, we need you to go do this other project, and that'll bring you financial stability, except I'm not so sure it will, but I can't be, I'm not convinced of that yet, but anyway, that's what I think about it, so the harder, the hard-hitting response is what they deserve.
I don't think we have to worry about our tone.
I will also say that in my conversation with the HUD staff person, he did say that, oh, you know, this is a boilerplate kind of lighter that they just take from housing authorities, and I said, you, you say those things to all housing authorities, really? But, I was gonna say something else when I lost it.
We have, we have actually thought they were incompetent.
Yeah.
Because they wouldn't, they wouldn't respond, they wouldn't answer, they wouldn't engage with us for the longest time, so anyway, it's just, that's how I think about it.
Oh, I know what I was gonna say, I think it bears mentioning that the letter was sent to board members and mayor, somebody outside of our agency, but without the courtesy of bumping the executive director for even telling her that it was in the works going out.
Yeah, that's gotta be in there too. If this is their boilerplate way of reviewing agencies, then they need to fire those people that designed that boilerplate, because it's, it's not professional, it's not professional, it's not measurable, I mean, that's not a review, when you give somebody a review, you say you didn't do this 20% of the time, you didn't, you never did this, you know, I mean, you don't seem to understand is not a professional comment, and it's insulting.
This was, I, I do, I want to say that this conversation with the HUD staff person that I had was an informal conversation, and I do not want to throw them under the bus, so I'd rather keep that conversation, because he wasn't even around when all of this stuff happened, and so, and he kind of been going to bat for us a little bit, so I really don't want to throw him under the bus, because it was informal, if he had sent, something he had sent to me in writing, that may be something different, but I guess what I'm saying is, I, I really don't want that conversation brought up in our meeting with them, I don't think.
Okay, we can, we can talk about strategy for the meeting if they ever agree to have one. When do we want to have, Jo, when do we want to see this letter, and how soon do we want to get it out?
I'm thinking by probably Monday or Tuesday, I should have something ready to send out at the latest.
So by next Friday, we should be able to send it out?
I would think, as long as.
I think, I think we'd all like to see it, I think everybody should get to see it before we send it out.
Yes, it's the same process we used last time.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, Joanne, can you write that letter by the end of the week?
By the end of this week?
Or the beginning of next week?
Yeah, she said Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, I missed it.
Is that what you meant, Joanne?
Yes.
Next, Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah, Monday or Tuesday next week, maybe.
Okay. Because I don't, I don't think we need to have another special meeting, I think if you write the letter and you send it to all of us, and you get any comments back, and then you revise it, and then I think I'll consign it and send it.
Yeah, I think Monday or, Monday or Tuesday is.
Okay, okay.
I think the best strength is for Jan and Joanne to sign it, and that shows unity.
Okay. Well, Joanne, if you want to write it and, and, and be done by Tuesday, if Tuesday you and I want to have a Zoom meeting, you can, you can send it to me, I can look at it, and we can, after we discuss it, we, you can send it to everybody on Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday morning, and get comments back by Thursday so that we can send it by Friday.
I thought we previously talked about not having Joanne sign this, because it was separate as a, our response from, as the board, and so like, we're kind of cloaking her, we, 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 the, I think the way, the tone of the letter says, we're in unison with her, but I thought we talked about keeping her separate.
Okay.
Rest to Jan as the board chair.
I don't remember.
I'm fine, I'm fine with signing it, I'm fine with signing it, no problem, I'm fine with it coming from me on behalf of the board.
And that would be appropriate, I don't have a problem with it, I just.
And then, and, and. We will attach this 311-page document to it, so, and, and in it, we will say, if you have any questions, refer to the research, the seven years' worth of material that was researched before we replied to you.
I think.
Okay, anything else?
I think you should offer to, if, say that if they would like it to be electronic, you'd be happy to send it, because you're talking about sending paper, right? So if they wanted.
No, I emailed, I emailed them.
No. Everything goes, everything goes electronically now, the letter will go electronically too.
Okay, I just want to make, I don't want any excuse for not getting it, is what I'm saying, put a, put a return receipt on it or something.
And I also think, once we're ready, I think that at least Yusha should get a copy of our response letter, and all of this material, so that.
Everybody.
It's HUD standard protocol to notify the mayor, that's what they do. They think that mo, most public housing authorities are under the mayor, they don't realize that's not what goes on here, so that's why they included the mayor, not because of anything else, it's just their protocol, and.
I think it's their protocol, because the mayor appoints the, the.
That's right, but that's all the mayor does here, but other housing authorities, that isn't true.
And I, I don't have a problem with the mayor receiving the letter.
I don't either.
I could have received the letter.
I think it's fine to include Yusha, I'm just clarifying why they included the mayor.
Oh, yes, and my response to that is, they don't seem to understand how it operates here in Manhattan.
Actually.
I'm not arguing with them about that, I don't care, that's a throwaway issue.
I would be careful not to make it sound like we're too unique, this is.
Kennedy, you were gonna say something?
The program, and I want to make sure we don't, we don't point out something like that that says that we, we operate differently here in Manhattan, it makes it sound like we're renegades.
But we don't, we don't, because it's state law that the mayor appoints the board commission.
I think, like, you made the point that the issue is not necessarily that it went to the mayor, it's that the, you were not aware of these issues before they were presented in a letter that went to your board and the mayor.
Right.
Like, it should have been a conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
I was trying to make the point that, not to make that a huge issue, because it's a throwaway issue.
Right.
It's not important to this discussion at all.
That is, that is correct, we all agree.
So it is state law that the mayor appoints the board.
Sure. Kennedy, I thought you started to say something a minute ago.
Oh, I was just agreeing with everything that's already been said, so.
Okay.
I don't need to say it now.
Okay, okay, all right, are we, we're good, she's gonna write the letter Tuesday, she and I are gonna Zoom and discuss it, we're gonna send it all to you by Wednesday morning, you will add or make comment that we might need to change it, and then by Friday I should be able to sign it so we can send it.
I would say Tuesday at the latest, I may be able to get it done before then.
Okay, if that's the case, I think that our business is done, am I right? Pronounce?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you for making the effort to go to the center, guys, and for being here, otherwise, and we'll be in contact next week.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne, for all your hard work.
Absolutely.
And Mandy. And Mandy.